All right, so I'll do it after. I'd like to call the January 21st North Bramford Board of Education meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Mary, can we have a roll call?
Sure. Chairman Papa Volter?
Here.
Secretary Sienna?
Here.
Jana Bosamo?
Here.
Jeffrey McMullin?
Here.
Vincent Mace?
Here.
Marcian Atrio?
Here.
Cynthia Rice?
Here.
Salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we move through the minutes and the agenda, I just want to introduce Jeffrey McMullin. He was sworn in this morning and is replacing Carolyn Cantolora, who has resigned from the board. We just want to publicly thank her for her service on the board and all of her contributions.
I too would like to recognize and welcome Mr. McMullin to the board. I want to thank Ms. Cantolora for her dedication and time spent working for the children and the staff of North Bramford, and we wish her nothing but the best for the board.
And I do would like to welcome Jeffrey. It'd be nice to have him have a mail on the board.
I wasn't going there by the way.
In this day and age.
Okay. Visitors and press, is anyone monitoring Bruce's? I'm sure. Anything over there, Bruce? Visitors and press?
Not yet.
Okay. Let us know if anything pops in. Okay.
Yeah. So now...
We need to amend the agenda because we need to reconstitute.
Right, so I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to reconstitute the board.
Second.
Any discussion as to the resign? All in favor?
Five.
Which way do we go? Secretary, vice chair, chair, or the other way?
A chair first, so I make a motion to nominate. I nominate Sauna for chair.
I'll second that nomination.
Mary, are there any other nominations? Mary? No, I'm sure it's all.
Okay, you just have to cast a vote, but you want everybody to vote.
Yeah, I just want everyone to vote, so it's clear. Yes, please.
Chairman Papa Volter?
I'll pass.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Jana Bosamo?
Yes.
Jeffrey McMullin?
Yes.
Vincent Mace?
Yes.
Marcian Atrio?
Yes.
Cynthia Rice?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move on to vice chair.
I'll nominate Marcian Atrio for vice chair.
I'll second. Any other nominations? Cast one vote. We'll move on to secretary.
I'd like to nominate Beth Sienna.
Excuse me, we got to vote.
You casted one vote.
Oh, you casted one? Okay.
Just cast one vote.
This is really okay.
Yeah. I broke the trend, sorry on that. Beth Sienna, I seconded. Any discussion? Any other nominations? I'll cast one vote.
There we go.
Okay. While we're doing this, we should look at the various committees and go through where Carolyn had a spot and where there's openings. Jeff, do you vote by Jeffrey or Jeff?
I'm probably really like stumbling through there.
Okay, so we'll tell you where some vacancies are, and if anybody wants to be moved around, just let us know now is the time to do it, so.
We could give a brief little overview of the committee too, so we understand.
So negotiations is Marcy and myself currently. Can we get a room there? There's another opening.
I don't know. I thought.
There's three vacancies.
Is that an alternate?
Yeah, I think it was an alternate.
Yeah, why don't we have an alternate? Which is vacant at the present. Negotiations is for the union contracts, all the union contracts within the district, so.
We just did all those, though, correct? So that shouldn't.
We did this round, but then we re-up on teachers and.
Oh yeah, we have one coming up in the fall.
Yeah, they're cyclical, so they're not all done at one time. Yeah, it just seems it right now because we're bumped into COVID and it was, yeah. Okay, does anyone else want to be an alternate on negotiations? Okay. Budget and operations, again, there's usually, there's been a subcommittee traditionally where we review like the budgets, but we've been doing it during our board meetings now, so it's not been really happening that way now. And I think we'll keep this in place in case there's any outstanding issues or anything that we need to take off the table or there's something pressing, Martha, you want us for, we can still keep that in play, but we do most of the routine work here now. Vince, Marcy, and I are on it. Anyone want to be an alternate? Raise your hand. Say aye. Cindy?
I was going to go on anyway.
I know, because they were right, they used to be right before the board meetings, so we made it nice and convenient.
Okay. Curriculum, instruction, and strategic planning. Tracy is usually, does that, I think before one.
Sick.
Yeah, so it's a strong focus on curriculum and education and where we're going as far as a district with our initiatives as related to the students. Jana and Beth are on that. Do we have anyone for an alternate?
I'll vote for them.
All right.
And in that case, normally the alternate comes. You don't have to, but if you would like to, go over there.
It's just an hour before the meeting.
And understand, it is a public meeting, so anybody can, you can choose to come. It's not just limited to that. I try to, you know, I try to get here for them.
Yeah. Pension, Beth is on it. Was Carolyn your alternate?
No, Carolyn was, and then I was an alternate.
You were the alternate.
So now I'll just be in pension.
Okay, does anyone, and does pension need to be sworn in by the town because it's a town committee?
Yes, they do.
So I have to be sworn in?
Yeah. Because you have a voting, because you have a, you vote there. You're voting right.
Well, you just make sure Michael Paulus knows that so Beth can get sworn in.
I know. Well, I'm going to speak on behalf of, no, that is his background, is what he does, so if he wants to be on with Beth for pension, I think it would, what he does would be a nice for the two of you to.
And it's quarterly, so it's not crazy, right? And right, Beth, it's like 4:00 or something in the afternoon?
Yeah. Four or five.
Yeah. But you both need to get, you know, sworn in again for that before the next meeting.
Lisa?
Yeah.
Yes.
Policy, Beth and Vince are on it. We can have an alternate, but you guys seem to be doing a fine job. Yeah, if anyone wants to jump on. ACES is Jana. Building Committee is Beth, Marcy, and myself. Communications is Marcy, myself, and there is another. There's another space to fill if anyone wants to jump on it. Can I just ask a question about the building committee? Backtrack a little bit. Is that, are you guys going to be working in on the high school? I'm looking at how that works.
It's going to be.
We're going to discuss it later. Okay. Okay. Yep. Communications is Marcy and myself. That's communications with the town committee. We meet usually about quarterly. Or as needed.
Yeah, things in rounds.
You need to alternate? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah. I could do it. Wellness is Cynthia. I didn't even call you Cynthia, but I saw it in front of me. Okay. BOE and TC joint consolidation, Marcy and I are on that. And that, and BOE joint communication, I think that's overlapped, so that's myself. Okay. Ad hoc committees, transportation, bus safety. Mar, that's you. I don't really know what that is.
We haven't had it in a very, very, very long time. That's basically if we had, if we had a bus issue where we had to have a transportation hearing, and we're using the hearing officer now for that, are we not?
We are.
Yeah.
So that's kind of.
Absolvent.
Devolved, I mean, it's kind of like an ad hoc, like for an emergency if you needed it kind of thing. We haven't, I haven't done anything with that probably in five or six years or.
But I mean, it's not a bad thing to keep your.
Just leave.
Because if we do have a situation.
Marcy.
What's the transportation?
Transportation.
Yeah.
If anybody else wants to join on, they can, but we really haven't, we're using the hearing officer now, so it kind of gets a little easier for us.
And then the last committee is the calendar committee. And what does that just mean?
So we have been using ACES for our platform for the calendar. We'll vote on that tonight collectively. So we really have been following the lead of multiple districts, and then we choose our start date, which impacts our end date, so.
Can we do that collectively?
We can.
Because it's really like a one-shot deal.
Right.
We're having to.
Yeah, we are.
Yeah, okay.
So this was.
It's on there for tonight.
This goes way back because years ago, years ago, we were using the ACES Common Calendar basically, and teachers had to, teachers were able to have a couple of union reps sit in the committee with us. They had administration representation, teacher representation, and we worked on it together. They had to, it was solely up to the board, but they had input on it whether we wanted to choose to go their way or not.
Okay.
But we don't do it that way anymore. ACES controls it, so it's sort of.
All right. Okay, so I think we've handled all the reconstitution issues. Yep. Okay, let's approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the December 22nd, 2020 Board of Education special meeting as submitted.
Discussions? Vince, I'm looking at you because you always like half. Not in a bad way, but.
There are no corrections. There are.
Okay.
Who was the second?
I did.
Beth. Thank you. Volta? Chairman Papa Volter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Antrio?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Jana Bosamo?
Yes.
Jeffrey McMullin?
I'm staying.
Vincent Mace?
Yes.
Cynthia Rice?
I'm staying.
Personnel issues? That won't go over there again. Is that the second? And superintendent support.
Okay, thank you. Your communications are listed under exhibit B. Obviously with the situation, with the continuation of the phase that we're in due to the pandemic. Much of what we did was done virtually. The administrators have done an amazing job of keeping the community and the students involved to the best of their ability through virtual concerts, virtual fundraisers, a number of things that we've been trying to do to keep the students and staff spirits high. As you all know, it's the built rooms of winter and cloudy skies, and they've done a great job of working through some of those challenges. So if there's any questions for the administrative team, they're here tonight under communications, anything that they've done or that you might have seen, they can speak to that. Okay? Moving forward, field trips. Obviously, there are no field trips at this time, so that's a quick one to go through. The summer camp, it's, I think, the sign of hope that we are planning for our summer camp. I had a meeting with the directors, with Ms. Vaughn last week, and Ana DiMaggio, who assists with the running of the camp. We just tried to work through some issues with some of the limitations this year, and I think they have a great jump on coming back and starting with the summer camp again. Everything is done online, all the registrations, all payments, so nothing will be passed from hand to hand or person to person. We're looking to modify the number of the camps that we have, smaller size, more supervision. We are not looking to make money on this camp. We're looking to give kids opportunities and to get them in a safe environment where they can socialize and can have some fun. I'll keep you posted over the next several months on enrollment. We're going to open it up, and then the camp will be themed, and we're excited to get going. So we're going to run the camp from 8:00 to 4:00. We are not going to be running a lot of the enrichment activities because of, obviously, travel, transportation, and the limitations that we have. We also will not be doing the AM and PM care. There are times where children can be dropped from 7:00 in the morning till 6:00 at night. We're just going to run 8:00 to 4:00 and really monitor it. We are going to have a nurse on staff full-time during the day, and she'll do, obviously, all of the monitoring, any tracing, anything that would potentially happen with what we're dealing with now. I'll answer any questions if you have any. If not, to be continued.
Can I actually add something? I guess this would be the right spot. So we know sports are playing now.
Yes, they, yes, they are.
Which I'm pretty happy about myself.
Yes.
But when you look at our larger school population, it concerns me that there's so many other kids being left out. Do you think that your arts department can start looking at ways to put together a school play for the kids, whether it's an outdoor venue or a vignette, like anything that we can start engaging more kids? I mean, honestly, my kids happen to be athletes, so I'm thrilled about sports, but it leaves me wondering, what are the other kids missing out on?
I know Mr. Steffler is sitting there with his hand up, ready for.
He's like.
I never go to home. She's retired, her new seat is our town court director, and she has two proposals that she drafted about revisiting Mama Mia with modifications in for the production and maybe moving the date.
Yeah.
So we met last week, and we have the draft proposal, so go to Mr. Schoolmaker's office for his review. And it would really modify spectator expectations and maybe just use mezzanine instead of a whole auditorium. So there's a bunch of things that Cindy has looked at, and we're excited to have that opportunity possibly. The company was able to give us the rights again to Mama Mia. Mama Mia is one of those plays where there's so many schools that want to produce it. You have like a year wait to get the rights, and we were supposed to do it last year, so the companies allowed us to delay a whole year, but possibly do it this spring. So that's, that's in the works now.
That's fantastic.
So the arts are alive.
The arts are alive. Do you think anything could happen in the middle school as well? I know they have a play too.
Oh, they have a play already.
I mean, I remember. I remember these kids. I just feel that. I want to get as many kids engaged, especially to.
Oh, the middle school is.
The mental health crisis. I mean, you got to get these kids moving.
Yes.
Typically, typically, we have our play, we've opened our production at the high school. So one thing that we would have to figure out logistically if we were to do something is how to get two major productions in a shared space in the middle of the pandemic, which could be problematic. I'm sure we could pick outside of the box. Probably the biggest challenge we have is that Sharon Moniz, our esteemed director, she's on leave for the year, so right now, we don't have a person in place. But if it's something that we're going to start discussing, I'm sure we can find somebody, and we'll. We can brainstorm. It doesn't have to look like our production always was.
Right.
I agree, as long as we have the kids doing something and producing in a safe manner. We've done, we've done theater arts, not full-blown out shows, but cabaret-style productions that have taken place in our cafeteria. And I'm just thinking out loud, we could, we could provide the opportunity for students. We could tape it, and we have the technology, we stream it, and let families and the public enjoy it best too, so.
That would be nice.
If some people start looking into tomorrow.
That would be great. Perfect. Thank you.
I have a question in regards to the summer camp. You mentioned having a nurse be staff there, so is that going to be put out as, to the nurses that work in the North Bramford school system, or is it going to be put out externally to other?
I think we would look internally first and see if there's any interest. If we, if we had no interest, we would then put it out.
Scott, you also use like volunteers, younger kids. Would they have to be vaccinated in order to work as a volunteer with these kids?
That's a good question. I wish I had a better answer for vaccination and, you know.
Well, we're talking like July, right? So supposedly, most of the people would be.
In theory, if we had.
So they would be under 16 years of age. And I would not require them to be vaccinated, which I wouldn't do anyway, so it's really, you know. I think we'll have a better idea in March, April, when we start rolling this out. I'm hoping that the educators are vaccinated in March. I'm hoping, as part of, you know, phase B, you know, we'll see.
Yeah.
I don't, right, I know.
My point is the.
So let's just, we can monitor it as we go.
And you're a nurse.
Exactly.
So it's a little behind schedule, but anyway.
A little.
About the chipper's role of the sport. Do we have some details? What's going on with the sports intermediate in high school? What sports are coming out?
So I can, I can give you an update.
Okay. Give us an update.
So there is nothing going on at the intermediate school right now. CIAC has allowed for sports to start. The only sports that are not running right now are wrestling, which we do not have, competitive dance that we do not have. So we are participating in boys hockey, boys and girls basketball, and fencing, and we are conditioning for outdoors track right now. We have 16 girls in our JV varsity girls program. We have 24 boys in our JV varsity boys program, and we have 22 hockey players playing right now. Our athletic director's done an amazing job getting together with our coaches, walking through all the mitigation strategies, making sure that we're tiering our practices and we're separating and distancing, and everyone is participating in masks. We have sanitation crews coming through in between practices. They do get mask breaks more frequently, you know, during the day, excuse me, during the practice. The schedules are coming out. They'll be playing 12 games in boys and girls basketball, and then they'll have a tournament at the end of their season. It won't be a state tournament, but it'll be a local tournament. Hockey is similar, but they play in the SCC, different than the Shoreline Conference, and they've released their schedules about. So we're really excited about our kids being in a very controlled, healthy environment and getting them back. And I know that they've been thrilled to be back participating.
I agree. How are we going to do the fans?
So we are, we are not going to comment on the fans right now. I'm going to wait until February. I'm tracking the rates of infection in North Bramford in the state, and then, you know, we'll make a decision based upon where we're at in three weeks. In three weeks, it can make a big difference. We're seeing rates go down into the fives right now. It's the first time since December. They're starting to trend down. We're hoping next week, we're going to get, you know, lower and continue into February with the.
I agree with you that the rates are trending down from 9.3 down to 6.3 now to 5.7. I follow that. But they're also predicting over the course of, for the country, and Connecticut's part of that, that over the next few weeks, it's going to be the darkest time of the coronavirus, and it's going to spike. My only concern is there's a lot of parents who want to watch their kids play, especially basketball is indoors.
No, but we'll, we'll keep, we're going to wait three weeks.
Okay.
We cannot start until February 8th. You know, if I had a crystal ball, I would, I would be the richest guy on the planet. We're going day to day, but, and, you know, we ran volleyball indoors in the fall, and we were able to, with our capacity in the gymnasium at the high school being upwards of 600 people, we were separating them 12 feet apart with an ax and allowing two guests per player on the team. So if we carried 12 basketball players, we'd have 24 invited guests. They would give their address, their phone number, everything, tickets given beforehand, so we would really monitor it, which we did for volleyball. That's the mindset that we're kind of thinking about right now, but we just want to, we want to watch this for the next three weeks.
You know, you have to worry about the visiting team too, and they're.
Well, we, we don't have to allow visitors in.
Okay.
We don't have to do that, so that's something that, you know, we're going to collect. We made the meeting, we did a Zoom meeting this weekend. The AD and the administrative team and myself, and we're just constantly, as information comes in, addressing it.
I'm glad I'm starting them. I'm just interested in how it's all going to work.
Sure.
Everybody say fans and the players, the referees and everybody else.
Yep, absolutely.
So that's working out.
Okay. Any other questions on camps or if you address sports and, okay, in the arts, of course? The Open Choice Program, for those of you who don't, I'm a huge advocate of our Choice Program. We have 26 seats that we fill for students to come in from New Haven. It's been, it's been a great program. It's something that I think brings a great deal to, to our school system. I have 10 vacancies for next year, and I'm asking that the board support and endorse the continuation of the 26 seats that we, that we have for next year. So the number would stay the same for seats opening. We would look to backfill 10 seats.
I don't know if I remember something past that. Did we lower to something based upon?
That was, that was ACES. That's ECA Arts Program. We lowered, the Choice, the Choice Program is the students that come in, that pass in from New Haven.
Where are the open seats? Because I, like, I see a different thing, and then I see a bottom line that says 2021, 2022 opening, but nothing adds one to that.
So we have some students who do not return, and then we have some graduating seniors. So what we will do is, once we work with ACES again to find out the interest level, and then we go through, there's usually, wait, there hasn't been a line in the last couple of years. Usually, there's a waiting list. We would backfill based upon the grade openings and, and fill there.
But that's what, so do you, do you know where those openings currently are?
So if you look at.
X, is it K? Is it?
Yeah, so anywhere there's.
Third.
Yeah, so any, any blank spaces there, we would look to fill. So if you move the lines over and go to advancing one, you can add them up. So usually, you know, if we're going to graduate five seniors this year, we would then roll, grade 12ers, five graders graduating. So we're going to roll those two 11th graders forward, so they'll become advancing two. You see that underneath the five? So we'll look to backfill, obviously, some of those seniors, and we can strategically place them and balance them in all the buildings. So we try to have, you know, at least a couple of students in each building coming in.
Just out of curiosity, do you, in past experience, and I don't know if I've come across it, but like to backfill a senior, I just, like, how likely are.
Well, so if we, no, no.
An advancing junior is going to go, want to come here?
Well, we don't backfill a senior.
No, so we might take those three openings and move them to Kimmy Garden.
Oh, okay.
So, because we know we're going to have two seniors next year.
Got you.
So sometimes, if we don't get 10 students that want to enter into the system, and there is a senior that's eligible that wants to come, we would take a senior.
Okay.
So we always look to, you know, replenish, and then if we have an opening, we fill it.
Right now, we have 16 to 10 vacancies.
10 vacancies.
And is there a list of students looking to come here?
ACES does all of that, so they handle that, and then we work with them, and then they go and interview, and then will let us know that they have the students, and then we, that's when we get into the process. They handle all of that, placement, transportation, everything.
So do we need a motion now or do we do business? Now, I'll make a motion that we do the total open choice seats of 26 again for 2021.
Second.
Discussion?
He said 2021. It's 21, 22.
I know, she seconded.
Well, he said the 26 seats was the last.
21 to 22. I see. I took a quick look at it.
Second. Chairman Papa Volter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Antrio?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Jana Bosamo?
Yes.
Jeffrey McMullin?
Yes.
Vincent Mace?
Yes.
Cynthia Rice?
Yes.
Okay, I thank you on behalf of the Choice Students. Next, we have the ACES Education Center for the Arts. We have information regarding enrollment. I know Tracy can speak to that. We do not have a motion on there right now. In the past, there's a number that we approved, and I would ask that if you are in favor of doing that, we amend it, we make a motion to continue with that. We can let our students know and let the ACES program know that we have commitments and we don't lose spots. It's very competitive. Our students have done extremely well in this program. There's a lot of programs that we, we do not offer that, that the ECA provides for our children, and they absolutely love it. So Tracy, if you want to just update?
Sure. So this, we have three seniors currently in the program that will be graduating, with a total of five currently attending. So with even keeping funding as it is with five, we still have three vacant spots for next year. We have had a variety of numbers of seats that we do budget throughout the years, and it has changed, but I think that's what you were referring to. So as of, for instance, last year, we had seven students. So, and then this year, we had just the five. So we know of one at least at the middle school level that would like to attend, that will be auditioning to attend, but we still have the two other spots that would be open, even if that child does become eligible for the spot. We have two more spots. So depending on the budgeting process, we would ask that we at least do the five spots that we're currently budgeting for.
So we have eight in total, is usually what we have.
We have eight.
Not going, but we have usually eight open.
You've gone from 12.
Right.
Yeah.
But I think we lowered it two years ago to eight, so it would be like, in theory, two for each year, but if there's no one going for junior, maybe then you'd get three for senior year like that this year.
So I don't know if COVID played a role in it, because as of last year, March, at that point, we were already into the season, and we don't currently have any freshmen there. So that may have made a part of it.
And we left in March of last year, so.
So I don't, I don't know, so we could very well have more than four or five people asked to go, including maybe sophomores, but right now, at least the five would be what we would request for you.
But last year, we did eight, correct?
We had eight openings.
You had eight budgeted, but only five. You had eight budgeted, but only five seats for it.
Right, okay, so on the budget, we budgeted it for eight, okay.
Correct.
Are we paying per student regardless?
We do, we do pay per student that attends.
That attends, so if we budgeted for five or eight, there's only three or whenever.
You would not be, yes.
Right.
Well, I'm a firm believer in the program.
I absolutely like want to continue it and I'd say, I hope everyone would agree.
Stay with this current number.
Stay with the current number.
If we don't, if we don't use it, we don't lose it.
Does anyone like to make a motion?
Can I make a motion?
What, how would you like me to word that motion now?
That we continue with the eight.
With the eight spots, okay.
For this school year.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to continue the ACES ECA program for eight students for 2021 to 2022 school year.
I'll say it.
May I roll call though? Chairman Papa Holter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nanfrio?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Jana Bosamo?
Yes.
Jeffrey McMillan?
Yes.
Vincent Mace?
Yes.
Cynthia Rice?
Yes. For clarification, last year we paid $5,145 per student.
I believe ACES talked about a 3% increase for this year.
Okay. Um, how do we advertise it to the eighth graders so they know they can apply? Like, how do you let the, yeah.
For Mr. Ormore.
So this program as well as several, several other programs that are offered to our students are coordinated through our council's office.
Okay.
And our counselors will generally speak with the students during all room, let them know what the opportunities are and people will actually come in and make presentations depending on where the program is from.
Okay, that's excellent. And again, Tracy, can you just tell us what, what, we have some new members and some might not from, remember from last year.
So ACES is a program, it's, it's the Center for Performing Arts. It's through ACES collaboration with all of their districts. It is from Mr. Steffler and Mr. Quads, you can probably speak to this better than my recollection. It's at 12 o'clock, from 12 o'clock on, we provide transportation to ACES, but students provide their own transportation home. There's theater arts, there is creative writing, there's dance.
Instrumental?
Instrumental, there's one, I want to say there's five.
Theater.
I said theater arts, I thought there was one.
You say art, you said art.
Art.
Drawing, like sculpture, yeah, so.
So theater arts.
Theater visual art is visual arts. It's theater, visual arts, dance.
Instrumental, vocal.
Instrumental, vocal. So you audition, it is, it is a, a process by which you are accepted or not. You can be deferred or not accepted. And then once that happens, we go to your school district, your school district decides whether or not they have the money to fund you. We could have eight seats open and we may have 12 people apply, but if only six make it in, they're not going to fill the eight seats because we have the money for that. It really is a competitive process.
It's five days a week?
Five days.
Five days a week?
12 to 3.
12 to 4, I think 12 to 4, isn't it?
It's really, it's like, if you envision that, it's like the advanced placement for these selective programs and the audition process is very competitive. We had a boy that danced that was on Broadway, right? That danced on Broadway and that, it, it's something that, you know, it would be very difficult for us to offer. They hire a lot of Yale professors and the best in the field and then kids come from 16, 17, 18 towns.
And it's right downtown. The campus is Scottman, but it's...
It's fabulous.
Actually, they're working on a new building too, they're renovating.
They're renovating.
Yes.
We're downtown.
Right by Trump Hill Street.
Is it on the street?
They even try it on Paul's Farm.
On the street, okay, yeah.
I put my name on the line, crowd. Is a child eligible to apply after, let's say they're in the middle of their sophomore year and decide next year?
Yes.
So it's a great, great odds.
Yes. Traditionally, I would say ECA obviously likes someone to begin with the program so they get the full benefit for four years, but we have had students apply at different stages.
Do we mark this on to our honor students within like honors arts?
In the arts, yeah. Because it is a sacrifice too, when you have to leave your, your mainstream school halfway through the day, get on a bus, travel and then get transportation home. It's a huge commitment.
And your schedule's not always compatible with, you know, because I've met some kids that take...
If you do extracurricular back at school, you're going to miss because you're not getting back till five.
But that's how much they want to do it.
We also have, our schedule, since you attended, has become a blocked schedule, so the last two periods of, of the day are stable. So they would miss those every other day, it's the same periods. But if we are offered a one-off class, like an AP physics class during that time, then that student takes it either on their own through, through a virtual application or is a pass to try and work something else out.
And they report back grading to North Cranford or to the separate?
It's not really a grading like A V C.
Okay. It's performance based and how do they, how do they mark that with, with the guidance department?
I would have to look. I suspect that honor transfers in the area, what their area focuses and the courses they have completed.
Yeah, it's acknowledged down there.
It's credit based, I think, I don't think there's that.
Just wondering, ask students that are going to be advancing to college, who obviously want to do this.
They have portfolios and they do performances that are then like their final performance, they videotape, they have, we have had, I don't think, Esme that we had years ago actually took her experience there and went to film school in California and has already produced things and won awards. So we have, as Scott mentioned, we have a young student, Tyler, who went onto Broadway from there.
All natural students from North Cranford or will we also...
Some are choice students.
Okay, so Tyler was, was he, no, Tyler was ours.
No, 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 Tyler was ours.
So that student, if we're paying for that choice program, with our, the...
I don't know that we ever have had a choice child though.
In ECA?
In ECA. Because their home school is New Haven, I don't know how that would work because ECA has an agreement with New Haven. I'm not sure we've had one, not in recent history.
It would be a wonderful topic at that point in time. Thank you.
We need to make a motion?
No, we already did.
Oh, we're already done?
Yeah, we're on to calendar.
Wait. Vince, you're supposed to keep me on task over here, come on.
I'm getting ready for the lecture.
All right.
Spoken like an...
School calendar, exhibit D. We have a copy of the proposed 21, 22. Thank you on behalf of ACES, forgot to do that. And the eight children had that opportunity, so thank you for supporting them. We have the calendar and if you go to exhibit D, you will see start date, end date, number of days on the right side of the calendar. We have the first student day on September 1st, prior to the Labor Day holiday. We discussed that and there's a lot of mixed emotion on that, but with what we've been dealing with, with being out of school, we really wanted to get the kids back as soon as we possibly could, coming off, you know, summer break. And then we kind of obviously eased into that long weekend, regroup. That would put us out in June on the 9th, which would be that second week, which is early. And we felt that was, was in our best interest for teaching and learning, getting the kids back after what they've experienced and what we've all gone through. We also have very exciting start date in June for the high school. We're looking to put shuttle in ground. So, you know, we want to, we want to try to...
That was my, that was what I was going to ask you.
Capture, capture the building around the ability to get the kids out early and then the next phase of demolition is in...
Well, wait, isn't, isn't it going to go this June, like June 23rd?
This June, this June coming up.
So it has nothing to do with this town?
No, but they're following the year.
It does go.
So I'm planning out four years. So that, that second year is the second part of the demolition of the diamond. So the earlier we can get out of school and, and complete that demolition, the better off we are for the last third of the project.
Because at the end of this calendar, June 9th, when they're starting the second demolition, that September is when we hope to have the kids in the new part of the building.
They'll, they'll be entering.
So we may have to, just something to think about, getting, if we get out June 9th of that year, we may not start quite as early in September if they need an extra week or so, right? We have that flexibility to do that.
I mean, there's so many variables right now with the building project. I think once we satisfy the calendar start date, which is the most important piece with 181 days, knowing, what we're knowing with professional development, that's our first step. And as we get more, further along into this building project, we'll have a better idea.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
Could be just me, but I noticed October 11, 2021, we got Columbus Day and then April 12, 2022, we have Columbus Day again.
Wait, oh, yeah.
Yeah, we do.
October 12.
Yeah.
And then April 13.
It just, it just carry over, so that is a scratch, we're actually on vacation during that time anyway.
So we have to scratch that, September 12.
Yes, it is.
Well, we can honor Columbus twice, but...
Yes.
And we're all that week anyway, so thank you, Columbus.
I guess so. Maybe we can't.
Straight, so.
All right, Vince, so you make a motion with that correction.
I make the motion to accept the, did you adjourn motion already?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, make the motion to approve the 2021, 2022 North Cranford Public School Calendar with the correction of the April Columbus Day as being submitted.
Second. Discussion? No call, man. Chairman Papa Holter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nanfrio?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Jana Bosamo?
Yes.
Jeffrey McMillan?
Yes.
Vincent Mace?
Yes.
Cynthia Rice?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, us, we're over that district wide website. I'm going to pass some sheets around to you and... Mr. Williams is here as our webmaster so he can answer any specific technical questions. We went to a new web provider.
A little years ago, Mr. Williams?
A little over a year.
A little over a year ago. We have been happy with the web provider.
People seem to find it easy to operate and they change them.
So I'm, I'm leaving this up to your discussion. We have all of your email addresses listed if you want to check them for accuracy.
Mine's wrong.
That's why we're checking, because I know you will come up as a conflict with another family member.
So what, what happens if somebody emails me at eminofrio@northcranfordschools.org?
Goes to you.
That's on our email. My email is Marcy, M-A-R-C-E-Y, and O-F-R-I-O because the school nurse is Morgan and O-F-R-I-O. So M-N-O-F-R-I-O.
She must be getting all your emails then.
Well, I mean, you just line up all of them. No, hers, hers is Morgan and that's why you sub both of ours out.
Can you email Bruce tomorrow and we'll change that?
It'll work for me to watch. It's the alias.
Huh?
They'll go for M-N-O-F-R-I-O or Marcy O-F-R-I-O.
I think it's bumped back when I found it.
Yeah, people are saying that when it comes up M-N-O-F-R-I-O, that it's getting, it's not getting to anyone. So I didn't know, Anna had thought that if M-N-O-F-R-I-O, if somebody sends it to M-N-O-F-R-I-O, they're going to get a flag saying, are you looking for Marcy or are you looking for Morgan?
I'll take me to that.
We'll, we'll do a test tomorrow.
Okay.
All right, can you email Bruce tomorrow?
Yes.
And then we'll test him.
Yep.
I thought it was going to Gmail account.
I'll email myself.
I thought it was going to a Gmail account instead of this one. Am I wrong?
It is a Gmail.
It is a Gmail account. It is, but that's our, our address is this.
Yeah, it's linked to a Gmail account.
Okay, so it goes to this, but then it kicks over to the Gmail.
It's the Gmail. I think it's Gmail based, but it's linked to it.
Yeah.
So on the subcommittees portion, if we could have...
Update.
The subcommittees on it, the subcommittee minutes, if there are any minutes from the subcommittee and the people who are on the subcommittee.
Next page.
Next page.
Next page. So we'll update it.
Probably did that, okay.
Yeah, so we have that.
You need the suggestions already?
We, we'll go. So we'll, we'll update obviously with our additions tonight. So we'll, we'll add those.
I took a picture and sent it to Anna.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
We'll, we'll get those on the site.
Okay, and the other, only other suggestion I had, which I didn't put on my thing, can we maybe revise the about us? It seems a little bit sparse.
Okay, I'll click on it tomorrow and take a look at it.
Just, and I, I think we could use more language from K, that, that's a little bit more robust for about us, but...
We could do that.
Yeah.
I don't have it in front of me, so I...
Now we have all this.
I'm at a disadvantage, but...
I mean, I don't want it to be so overwhelming, but it, it should be a little bit.
But if we put...
Oh, okay, good. We can, you know, we'll do is we'll look at some other demos.
Yeah, just so.
We'll, if you want a little more meat to it.
Yeah, needs a little something.
We'll take a look at it.
Yeah, okay. Otherwise it's fine. Does anyone else have any?
And you can't access it from your mobile?
Here.
From your mobile device? Coloring is purple and white, it's not purple and black.
Depends on your computer.
So you'll, unless you're having computer problems.
I still can't figure out why my computer hide it on purple and black. I'm like, who the heck did that? That's terrible. I go to another computer and it's purple and white. I'm like, I still have no idea why that happened.
All right. Any other questions on the website?
Nope.
Okay. I am going to pass out the school culture survey at our last meeting. I was charged with collecting data on feedback from parents on our ability to go remote on snow days. And we had over 1,200 responses. So I'm passing a color-coded snow day survey result around to you.
How many students are in the district, 1,700?
1,737.
1,200 respondents.
67.
That's a, that's a good amount.
It was a good, a good result, good turnout. So it's indicative, I think, of, you know, where people are at right now. It's pretty clear as you get towards older grade flesh that, you know, students are able to stay home alone. They do not need a great deal of supervision when they're working from home. So if you look at, the only two grades that wanted no school was pre-K and K. So it was pretty close, pre-K, pre-K at sixteen to fifteen, obviously, K was much higher, forty-one to thirteen. So and then you can, you can look across up through grade twelve. But what I do want to add is that we, we changed our remote day schedule. So if we go to a remote day, if I call a remote day, it will run from nine to one o'clock. Okay? So the staff will still have a full day. They'll go on, they'll do their professional development meetings with teachers at eight o'clock. The kids will come on at nine o'clock. At one o'clock, it will shut down. The kids are free at one o'clock. Also, what I
All grades?
All grades. So what we gave was the flexibility for people who say, oh, let the kids play, and we don't want to take away anyone's childhood. That's for sure. But giving them the ability to go out if they're up at seven and they want to go out and play in the snow, or if they want to go out at one o'clock and play in the snow. And we felt that was a good compromise. This may be the only year that we have the ability to use remote days. I mentioned it months ago that I was going to take advantage of it for many reasons, knowing that this project was underway and we did not want to run past June fifteenth. If we start adding snow days, we could go up to June thirtieth. We obviously have had a mild winter so far. And knowing that if we had an icy morning and we had to close, the kids aren't going to go out and play in icy weather. So we're going to stick with the remote, and we seem to get good support from parents.
So that affects this year, and we don't know next year?
We don't, well, no, unless the governor
Opens it up for
Opens it up through the new commissioner of education.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll know in the spring.
And will you post these results on the website, please?
Sure. For those who are watching this evening, we'll post it. Any questions on that? Okay. Oh, the COVID update. So I have handouts. There's a letter that I sent yesterday to the staff, and attached is a letter. I might have sent it to you, I don't know, from Deidre Gifford, who's our acting health commissioner, and Charlie Russell Tucker. So I'll let you look through that. And while that's happening, I'll just give you an update as of today for our positive cases in the district. Currently, as of today, since last March, since last March, when we started tracking when this started, when we shut down and went remote on the thirteenth of March, we have had twenty-five staff members test positive, total, twenty-five total. Students, and that's pre-K through our twenty-one-year-old program, we've had sixty-four positive cases total. So twenty-five staff.
Ten months.
Ten months, sixty-four student. We are as transparent as we can be every day. When we have a case, we put it out, we use four o'clock as our cut point. Anything that comes in after four would go the next day. This past week, we had a couple of positive cases that Jerome Harrison and the quarantine numbers were high. And I think people see that and they go, oh, my gosh, what's happening? They're very cautious with shutting down with the little ones, the youngsters. It's much difficult to keep the five and six-year-olds six feet apart with their mask on for greater than fifteen minutes, which is what we use as compared to high school students who, they know what to do. They know the drill. The staff doesn't come in within that six-feet range. So we really don't have nearly as many quarantines. And you'll see that at the upper levels as we do in the pre-K through grade three. And we err on the side of caution. We have the ability to bring the students back after ten days now versus the fourteen, following the CDC protocols. So it's gone well. I think we've done a great job staffing and sharing staff and using our resources. We've hired part-time graduates, students, college students who have been home. We've taken advantage of their extended break, and we've had a number of them come in and fill in and be in the building. And that's been a great help to give teachers a break during the day, to fill in for classes, to fill in when we have. And I'll let the administration, please, speak up if there's anything you'd like to mention about how your buildings have been going or how the staffing has been going. Force it quietly. As we don't get too
Of course, our school nurses have been fully dialed, you know, through the process of contact tracing and communicating with parents and disturbing quarantine time and doing that piece of it, so we don't get involved with the health piece of it. You know, coordinating with Cindy as their supervisor in Shore Health when it calls for it. So I think they're another important piece of the puzzle. The parents have been very, very supportive. You know, the kids have had to go off for a number of days. They understand and they've been very supportive. And the parents have been very proactive when they're unsure about their own kid's status. They're erring on the side of caution, contacting their school nurse, they're contacting us and picking their kids out if they're unsure until they get some definitive answers.
The administrators, they're not going to compliment themselves, but have done an amazing job. When the phone rings on a Friday night at nine o'clock or eight o'clock on Saturday morning, and they're saying, you know, hey, we've got a positive case and we have to do contact tracing, and the nurse will be texting me, and they're calling, and you know for the next three hours or more, depending upon the situation, they're working throughout the weekend. So cruelest to their efforts, they've done an amazing job. And I look back and, you know, I'm cautiously optimistic moving forward that we've done a great service to our children by getting them back in full day, giving them the choice if they wanted to stay remote, they had the opportunity. But those who decided to come in, we gave them that opportunity, and I think we've done a great job. So that being said, any questions? I have a questionnaire I'm going to pass around with all faculty. As of December thirty-first, a lot of the language from the CARES Act and what we could and now we aren't doing, there were questions that we answered and we put out in a question-answer form. And we're continuing to just monitor and be flexible with how we're handling each individual situation when we do have a quarantine of a staff member and their ability to, you know, to work and perform their function as a teacher from home and still bring value to our students. We're being flexible with that. And we've met with the teachers union, they've already, they've been very appreciative of our efforts in not only keeping them safe, but allowing them to, you know, continue to be a part of teaching and learning if they've been affected by it.
Questions?
You just made very well. I answered my question, but I'll ask anyway. So when a student is put in quarantine, is it going to be engaged in distance learning during that time?
Correct.
In this period?
Correct.
Teacher as well, if they're in distance, sorry, if they're in quarantine, they're going to be distant teaching?
Correct.
Unless otherwise actually having symptoms from this virus.
Correct, and they're sick.
Utilize their symptoms.
Right. Yep, so they all have Chromebooks. We're very fortunate to have our students be armed with Chromebooks and our teachers as well. And we've done a great job since last March getting everyone comfortable with teaching remotely and students as well.
Who in the classroom going on in the school, in the classroom regardless, for those kids that are acting in school?
So they're sitting and watching.
The world we're in right now, so.
That's the world.
Great.
Any other questions on?
Yeah, on the question two. I was sent home from school with some symptoms of COVID-19, waiting for the results whether they staff or homeless symptoms of COVID-19 will report that they have sick days until the tests are received. So what happens with the test results?
Well, I think you don't know if they're negative or positive. If they're
Well, yeah, what's the condition?
Well, so if they're negative, then they can come back. Like, some people may all know cold, you just take a sick day. So you have sick days that you get over here. So then we have the ability to then go and change the marking from sick to a COVID-related day if it, you know, if it is to be marked COVID. So no one's finalized.
If they test positive, then they get paid for it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Oh, yeah, yeah. And they're expected to work from home unless they're too sick. And then they're taking sick days, and then I'm bringing in a substitute.
So when they work from home, and is the, because the class, the students would still be in school.
If they're not going.
Or somebody in the building, in that school overseeing them.
Supervised, and then they, the teacher would work with them, and they're on their Chromebooks. So it's kind of reverse. They're there, teacher's home, substitute there, and we're instructed. And it's worked well. I mean, we really
What's hot?
Great success, so.
And my doctor should do that.
Yeah. So.
If a teacher student does test positive, what's the protocol of contacting them and has symptoms? Is it two positives test, one negative test?
No, so it's the length of time that you have to be out and then symptom-free for twenty-four. Dr. Welch is our guru now on COVID-19, and he oversees and does the communications and works directly with East Shore Health, and we have a COVID team for every building. So we collectively get together and send out uniform messages, but it always goes through our COVID team.
Correct.
Yeah. So the vaccine, that was the last piece that I had, the vaccine, which, as you know, in my letter, it was to the staff saying, hey, you know, be patient, everyone. Some districts' teachers have gone out and gotten vaccinated through the VAM system or had opportunities where they were given the shot. They were, they were not supposed to. We will not be participating in anything until East Shore Health and Department of Health says educators, it's now time for you to upload your VAMs, names and email addresses at that time. We have three hundred and forty or three hundred and fifty, whatever, that are going to get the vaccination. They'll go up in advance. We've got it scheduled. We're trying to do it in one of the buildings, potentially here, with our nurses doing the vaccine shots. So it's really, it's a waiting game for right now. Okay? Next Tuesday, we are host site here for seventy-five-year-olds. We have fifty vaccines that we'll be giving out through this end of the building, through parking rack. They're all getting trained right now. Parking rack will not be giving the shots, just clarification. Okay. I think that is it for me. I think Martha, financial report.
Okay, so I handed out a financial report. You have one. Just to update you where we are, where we are on the new financial system search. We did have two more demonstrations, one as recently as yesterday. We saw the munis system and we saw infinite visions. And I hope to be speaking with the town finance department tomorrow to discuss what we saw, what we liked, and then see what the next steps are. So that's moving along nicely. Both of the systems we just saw seem very comparable. And, you know, so I'm looking forward to the new financial system. In regard to the budget report, with the holidays and all, there really hasn't been much change from the report that you saw last month. Our office has been busy preparing and getting ready for W-2s, 1099s, and the ACA document, which is the 1095C. So those are all done, and the employees and the vendors who receive the 1099 should be receiving those within the next few days. In regard to the budget, overall, we're still in very good shape, looking forward to June thirtieth. I am still leaving the high encumbrance in the unemployment line. The state is still several months behind in their billing, and we have been seeing higher-than-normal invoices. So I'm leaving that just for security purposes. And we will continue to monitor the oil, gas and electric, especially now in the winter months. In addition to the general fund report, you also have the Fund Twenty-Five report there. Just to remind you, the Fund Twenty-Five is the carryover funds that the town allows us to carry over. The first set of numbers ending in zero, zero, zero is the money you carried over from nineteen twenty. And then the other set of numbers, which ends in one, seven, eight, is actually going to carry over from this year of seventeen eighteen. And I believe almost half of that is through our financial system.
Okay.
We've also been very busy working on the proposed budget for twenty-one, twenty-two. And next week, next Thursday, we'll actually be presenting that budget to you.
Martha, I think, I can't remember what I was talking to you about. Can we just do an assessment kind of of it? And where are those outside spend with contractors like electricians, boilers? And if it's more financially beneficial for us to look at maintenance contractors, like what it's doing? I remember you talking about that a little bit, about everything's an emergency.
Yes.
And so we get billed at a much higher rate.
We did have that conversation.
We did. I can't remember where we had it. Yeah.
Yeah, we will begin working on that.
Yeah, because I think that's going to be a big, you know, a big lift for you, because it's probably not broken out exactly.
Yeah, there's going to be a lot of doing, but we will get it for you.
Absolutely.
I have a question.
Sure.
For the health insurance, the line two-ten.
Yes.
It's a negative, like we're
Yes, it doesn't appear as a negative, and that is because the employee and retirement contributions have not yet been posted, I believe, for two months. We've had a change in staff in the finance office, and we've been, the concentration for the past couple of weeks have been on W-2s, 1099s. So that, there's actually a note on my desk
Okay.
that says to walk the new individual through that process.
Okay, so is that then the same for the private tuition, five sixty-three?
No, so anything in a private tuition line are actual anticipated expenditures based on our outplaced students.
Okay, and then custodial, custodian maintenance supplies, that's in the negative, too.
Yeah, so the district has been spending a lot more than normal for sanitizer and cleansing solutions and different things for all the additional cleaning that we've been doing.
Now, we've submitted that for reimbursement as well through the state and the ability to get anything connected to COVID-19 back. And we are sending anything and everything forward to retrieve that. And just for, obviously for a new member, any questions that you have that you go home and you look at the packet? You have our email addresses. Do not hesitate to, you know, but just send an email. And if there's something that gives you notice.
Really, Jeff, they mean it.
Thank you very much. Just not at midnight or Sunday, eight o'clock anymore.
Martha, I thought you said it was okay for the advances. I'm okay with
Well, they do, they know. Their phones are on twenty-four seven, so.
Don't worry, I call at eight o'clock in the morning.
Any other questions for Ms. Wong?
No.
No?
No. Thank you, Martha.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we
Town manager?
Okay, so I'll kind of blend the next two together, the renovation project and town manager. I updated you on the vaccination process here next Tuesday. I didn't spend any more time on that. But there was a council meeting Tuesday night, and there was an action item for the council to have the ability to approve Rusty hiring consultants to do parts of the job that have to be done. It was best of subvention for a consultant to come in and go through the building and look at what has to be removed. An environmental consultant as well. So the council approved that, and there was quite a bit of dialogue back and forth. I think I logged off at nine-thirty when they completed it. And the line share of that meeting was based upon how the specs would be written, who would offer them, and how we were going to move forward. So the good news is, is that those three consultants are on board. We're going to get them in, and we're going to move through in a very short timeline to get this project moving and continue to be moving. The question I sent all of you that next day and to the council was, when we finished the meeting, I was picking up comments that were the council was going to serve as the building committee. So when I went back and looked at my notes for our ad hoc committee, we made it clear that, I made it clear that I want at least two board members and obviously myself on that committee. That was the reason for that email. So you've seen the responses, and we're going to continue that conversation because it's imperative that we have representation.
Absolutely.
Including my office with the board. And the biggest project this town has undertaken in the history of the town with what will lead to go into this project to meet the needs of our staff and students. So that is a conversation, and I've had a couple of conversations. I think we're going to go in the right direction. I feel very confident because people know the value of having our voice for our building moving forward. So I don't, I don't know if I missed anything with that, or if there's any questions that I can ask. I know that was very active.
I did read in one of the emails that they're looking for someone to be on the committee with a strong financial background.
That sounds like a official person.
Maybe.
Oh, see, Jeff, you're the new guy.
I know I have a financial background, but he really has a financial background.
When you're the new guy, you see all those empty spots.
If that opens up, I mean, I think it would, and I hate to throw something at you with such a large-time commitment, but we have a curriculum person and a teacher, has teacher on it, and I think it would be wise to have someone who's strong financially, because I know the committee also has many, many people who have backgrounds in construction and that end. So I think it would just be best for
Sure.
I agree with you.
I just have a question, too. I mean, does the state have a, would the state have a requirement to work with someone? Like, with the Board of En, Superintendent? I mean, it doesn't make sense.
Well, yeah, well
Okay.
It will, it will happen.
Oh.
When we submitted it, it went as council slash ad hoc committee.
Yeah.
But our ad hoc committee was never mentioned the other night. So I want clarification. As we move in towards a permanent project building committee, even looking at someone that we know to head that committee that recently retired from us, that was employed as our facility director, I won't say his name, he would be an ideal person to sit on that committee with his background with us to steer that. In the past, we had Jack Crasco, who oversaw these committees for years and was passionate about it and did a great job. He was on-site all the time. So we need somebody that's not affiliated with the board to be our eyes and ears and be there steering that permanent project building committee that has the time to do that. So those conversations are happening, and I'm hoping sooner than later, we're going to finalize this. And I have two names.
Yeah, and of course, Marcy and I will jump in and learn up, or we need to jump in.
Listen, there's going to be a lot of work. We're really in for a forty-month
And, and I think, I think it'd be really important to have John Florio on that committee.
Well, you know, there'll, there'll be other people.
For certain parts of it, you know what I mean?
As, as we walk through and do things, he's going to be around, but, you know, there's, there's people that, you know, for, like, the head of the, the permanent project, the person we're all thinking of, that would be ideal for, that is retired now and can spend that time doing it, you know, that's there during the day.
Yeah.
But they'll be around, our experts will be around.
Different people have different areas of expertise, and we should use them for what, for what they have, I mean.
Right.
You know.
Yep.
But besides this committee, we are on track right now.
We are.
We're pushing, pushing, getting things.
Listen, Rusty Malik has already, we met last week, he's meeting with every department chair, they are looking at specs, prints, square footage, locations of classrooms, we've moved things strategically with what we're looking to do, and, and their team has been amazing to work with. So they're, they're all scheduled in, and it's rolling. And that's why Tuesday, last Tuesday night was really important, because we can't miss a date. If we miss a date, and then we have to leave, and then it throws everything off in this cycle.
And this time of year, you know, not going to, we've been very lucky, but we could have meetings canceled for snow, we, we can't afford that, we've got to keep on track.
You know, they're going to go off to a, a.
That's true.
Construction management team, and, and it's going to hit the streets, I think, tomorrow. And there's already five that have notified town hall that are very interested. We're going to have 10 legitimate companies. This is, you know, people have been out of work, people are hungry, it's a great time to enter into the construction.
I didn't watch the meeting, they're looking for a construction manager, not clerk of the works, right?
Well, no, see, the, the whole language of, they're, they're going with the clerk of the works.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
On-site recording.
Clerk of the works?
Clerk of the works. So there's a lot of terminology, and that's the line share of the meeting the other night. So all of that will be defined with what they do, there'll be construction managers, management team that oversee all of the vendors and who's coming onsite, the clerk of the work will watch them for us on behalf of.
Yeah, we need somebody to watch them for us.
And then our permanent project committee, our chair will oversee, well, not oversee, but he'll work with the clerk and the construction management team. So we're going to do it differently than we did at NBIS.
Probably a good idea.
We're going to do it differently. And, and the big part of the conversation is, we don't want to bid on price, we want qualifications. There's going to be really good teams that are going to come in that can do this, we don't want to cheat the project and then end up having the roof that we have at NBIS, and now we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to keep water from permeating the, the bricks and causing mold. So I think we're in a good place, we just have to keep everyone going forward. Questions?
No.
Good, okay.
That would be another committee too, that will need to be sworn in once it's voted on.
Yeah, permanent project. Okay, budget preparation, as Martha mentioned, we're, we're underway. So next Thursday night, 6:30 here. 6:30? Okay, and then the following Thursday, same thing, here.
Yeah.
And we'll start the process.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve a special meeting on Thursday, January 28th, 2021, at 6:30 PM in the board meeting room of the Stanley T. Williams Community Center. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve a special meeting budget workshop on Thursday, February 4th, 2021, at 6:30 PM in the board meeting room of the Stanley T. Williams Community Center. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Committee reports negotiation will be moved to executive session when it's time comes for discussion and possible action regarding contracts, employment agreements, and additional personnel matters. Was there a curriculum committee?
Yes, there was.
Okay.
Ladies, are we going to do it?
You can take it.
So one of the things presented during our curriculum this evening was the teacher evaluation plan for 2021. The board did agree to accept the flexibilities offered by the state committee back in September, October, we agreed upon that, so we now have some in writing in the form of going to be distributed to teachers so they can see exactly what those flexibilities really entail within the evaluation process. So we have stepped outside our normal data management system, which is frontline, and we're using Google Forms and a structure built on our own as well as new forms because the flexibilities allow us to do things a little differently. We also spoke about some of the reimbursements that we can receive from the state through various COVID grants and funds, and how we're able to do that as a district, and what that means, and where we go, and some of the other changes. We took questions, or asked questions from the two members that were there about some of the things they have interest in or concerns about ways I would.
All right. There's no pension committee? No policy committee, right?
Is it still? Yes, um, the COVID update, I mean, they're pretty much in the same situation, there's many different schools, so some of them are all virtual, some of them are part virtual, they've had to shut down various programs periodically due to, you know, COVID and, and quarantining. Their health clinic that I spoke about is open right now for minor issues, and they're looking to maybe expanding, right now it's only open to people who work for us, the employer, but they may in the future have family members also be able to go to that clinic. Next month, we'll be starting the budgets, process for schools and programs. I spoke previously about early retirement incentive program, currently they have 26 people who are interested.
Wow.
Yeah, um, they're continuing, obviously, like, we are virtual everything, so they've been doing a lot of virtual orientations for the new hires, virtual open houses for each of their schools, they have magnet schools, ECA program, and other various programs they offer. And we are still talking about the location for the Thomas Edison Magnet School, which is currently in Cheshire, but they want their building back, so we have to move, and.
That's not very nice.
No, I know, that's the second time since I've been on the board, it happened in Hamda too. So they're still working on maybe purchasing the Chase Building, which is in, ooh, I can't remember where town that's in, but it's still pending, we don't know what's going to happen with that. And then the last part of the meeting was, we had an update from CA by Patrice, Patrice McCarthy, and she talked about what's going on legislatively. So all their committee meetings now are virtual, like all of our meetings, but it's for very large groups of people, and all the public hearings are virtual, so there's going to be a lot of difficulty in getting things discussed and getting things done. And one of the things they are looking at is learning loss, they're recognizing they need support, and that the federal government may have, or federal or state government may need to have to step in with figuring out what to do to help these kids. And they're looking at federal funding maybe coming in the second round of the COVID relief, which we have to use up by September of 2023. Another big thing they're looking at is diversity and equity, cultural competence, uh, excuse me, cultural.
Competency.
Thank you, of staff, diversifying staff. And there are four, five bills coming forward, but they're huge bills, so, with tons and tons of provisions on these bills, so we'll see what happens with those.
Thank you.
New building committee, exactly, kind of, but not really. Communications, no. New business, Scott, before I forget, I got a letter from CA that is to nominate two students between the grades of seven and 12 for our leadership award, and I honestly cannot for the life of me remember where I put this letter, but could you reach out to CA, because I think it would be really great.
When was it sent?
Like, four days ago.
Yeah.
I thought I put it in my CA.
No, we'll find it.
Book, but it was like four days ago, and the deadline, I think, is at the end of March.
Okay, seven, 12, leadership.
But, yeah, and it, and there was like, it was very brief, the application, basically name, date, and a brief, you know, explanation of why the kid would, you know, the student would be, you know.
Recognized.
Awarded this. But yeah, so it's two students between the grades, I just thought it would be nice, especially if everything's.
Under circumstances.
Yeah. I'm, I'm sure I'll come across it at some point, but I just wanted to bring that up, because I think it's important. Why don't we do visitors and press and go to the board before we adjourn to executive session, so everyone doesn't have to stay? So visitors and press, anything?
Well, no questions, but a lot of comments, I might share some of them.
Are they appropriate?
Yes.
Share on. It's been a long day.
There was a lot of praise for the suggestions on theater, ECA, this suggestion to maybe do something with the kids with video production, having them get their video.
We do have advanced video production now, we've gone to another level with that. Mr. Steffler?
Yes. So. There was some questions about promoting, or statement about promoting the ECA program to parents as well as a presentation to the grade. Seems like she felt that she had not heard about the program, so more, a little more promotion because it's coming up quickly.
Yes, my son doesn't tell me anything that happens in school.
What child does?
My elder son does not tell me anything, so I totally can understand that.
I think that covers it, but it was a lot, a lot of praise from a lot of people.
Nice.
Good, that's nice to hear.
Good. All right, go to the board.
I have something I'd like to say. Just something, I think that in light of the political atmosphere that we're in right now, that we should maybe go on record to make it clear that we're not here to indoctrinate any of our students to our own political views, and we must respect each student and keep our political opinions to ourselves. And I call upon Scott and the administrators to remind the staff that when in the classroom, the teacher or the staff should be politically neutral. I've just heard some things, so I just wanted to put that up there.
And I'll, and I'll go to another step, that if, if you hear something, please say something, because let us know, no, but let us know specifically, because we, you know, we're all looking to move forward, we're all looking to.
Yes.
Whatever your affiliation is, it really doesn't matter.
Doesn't.
And, and we know what our roles are and our professional responsibility as educators when we walk into that classroom, and there's a line that is drawn, and it's our responsibility. So if there's something that's specific, please, and encourage those people, if people come to you in downtown North Bramford and say, hey, so-and-so, you need to encourage them to reach out to their building principal or to the superintendent. There, there's no retaliation, there's no, we want to know, it's our responsibility, you know, and that's, that's something that we take very seriously. So thank you for sharing that, and those who are listening and watching, please pick up your phone or send an email, because we, we need to know. Thank you.
Okay, then I'll make a motion. Anybody else want to move on? I don't think we go see anything these days, so it's.
I know, I know. I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session as per section 1-225 of the Connecticut General Statute, as permitted by section 1-206A of the Connecticut General Statute, to discuss agenda items 7C, leave requests, and 9A negotiations.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Are we staying here for executive session?
We're going to stay here.
Okay.
We're going to wait for a question.